All right, I've got 6:30. I'll call this meeting to order. It's Monday, June 17th, 2019. It's 6:30 PM. This is a public meeting of the School Board of West Bend Joint School District, Number One. More than 24 hours prior to this meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of the meeting was posted in each school building, the entrance doors at the Education Service Center, and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. Copy was also sent to the Daily News, WBKV, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources who have requested notice of our meetings. Deb, can you confirm this meeting was properly posted?
Yes, it was.
Great, thank you. Please stand for the pledge.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got a packed agenda tonight. Hopefully, our board members have had time to review that. Before we get started, Toni Schmidt might be calling in a little bit later tonight, and so in the meantime, not in the meantime, but for this meeting, can I ask Nancy to be our acting clerk?
Yes.
Yes. Great, thank you. We do recognize a quorum here tonight, and like I said, packed agenda, and I'll take a motion on that.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second, any questions on our agenda tonight? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? None? Great. Let's start off with a nice recognition of one of our support Employee of the Year award recipients, Christine Fisher. Where's Christine Fisher? Come stand right up here in the front and face the crowd for us, and let's tell everybody a little bit about Christine Fisher. She's been employed in the district for eight years, and she's a special ed aide at Badger. Christine is extremely dedicated to the success of all the students and staff in the Intellectual Disabilities Room at Badger Middle School. She works tirelessly to teach not only academics, but also basic life skills to the students. With her, a child learning to independently put on their own gloves and coat is praised just as much as one learning to read or tell time. At her core, Christine believes that all children can learn and be productive citizens. She is truly a positive presence and makes each student feel valued and special. Her famous "You Rock" line can be heard every day. Christine has the amazing ability to see each student and understand their strengths and accommodate their needs independently. Christine has incredible knowledge, and her attention to detail, such as data collection, has helped create a very strong program. She goes out of her way to make sure she is meeting the needs of all students. She communicates weekly with outside support systems and school specialists to ensure cohesiveness with the lessons being taught and the best practices are being used. Christine attends extracurricular activities and events of her students outside of the school setting to support their success. Christine goes above and beyond the call of duty to ensure that the students at Badger are receiving the best education possible, and she delivers it with the purest of hearts. Christine, we are so proud to have you as one of our employees and especially one of our Support Employee of the Year Award winners, so congratulations.[201.73][201.75][applause] You want to say anything to the crowd?
Sure.
You bet.
Right, I'm all in it.
Good, perfect.
First of all, I was overwhelmed, honored, and surprised at being selected as Support Employee of the Year. I really love my job at West Bend School District. I love working with the students with intellectual disabilities, fosterment, Badger. First, I want to thank you for having this award. West Bend School District has amazing support employees. Every day, support staff help the guys in the room. They do little things to help our classroom, but they make big differences in our classroom. It's little things from like the lunchroom people take, know my students' favorite cereals and make sure they don't run out, so we don't have behaviors. And the nurse comes in and checks on our sick kids, and the administrative assistant always make sure that we have coverage if someone calls us sick. So, thank you for having this award for support staff. Second, I want to thank the ladies I work with in the ID room, Paula Kabilski is my new teacher, and the other care professionals. They're dedicated, motivated, and passionate. I'm inspired daily by them, and enjoy working with them. And thank you to everyone who nominated me. I'm very humbled. Next, I want to thank my husband and family. My husband's very patient with me. I often drag out my laminator and my belt curls. The ladies in the ID room are the belt curl queens because I'm often making the menu with belt curls. Lastly, the most important people I want to thank are the students that I work with throughout the year. The ID classroom is an incredible room. The students work hard every day. We often spend a year or two to accomplish something, but our students are amazing and refuse to quit. For example, I've spent over a year teaching our students to zip their coats. This is a lifetime achievement. My mom and dad will never have to zip a coat again. So, I love their joy of learning and their determination. And I love my classroom, so anybody who knows me loves to know that they love this community a lot. And I thrilled to receive the Support Employee of the Year. I love coming to work every day because those staff and students are like the best of the school, the support of the team, and I enjoy seeing how we all work together as a team. We have educators, students, and teachers.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.[362.87][362.89][applause] Very cool. Mike, we're going to have Mike Bentall come up and talk about our SkillsUSA team. Same thing, front and center, right here, and we'll have you face that way.
That's you guys.[382.87][382.89][laughter] I'm Mike Bentall, a tech ed teacher and SkillsUSA advisor. SkillsUSA, if you don't know, is a partnership of students, teachers, and industry working together to ensure that America has a skilled workforce. In exactly one week, I'm going to take these two and five others to Louisville for the national competition, and the reason that there's only two of them is because the rest are at work. So, it's skills working, which is kind of cool. The state competition was at the end of April. We had 21 students compete, and of those 21, we had 13 that placed in the top three. We had a broadcast news team that got third, a student that placed in photography in third place, woodworking display was second, and then we had motorcycle service technology. He placed second. The first-place student couldn't make it. He's going with us to nationals as well. We had Max Whittle and his partner Charlie Namor get first place in TV video production, and then we had Lily Miller and her teammates of Jim Miller, Abini Hough, and Frankie Bright get first in broadcast news. What was that? I'm sorry, Lily modded. I'm sorry. And that's the fifth year that we've had a team qualify for nationals in broadcast news, so.
Cool.
It's all about them.
All right.[462.52][462.54][applause] Congratulations, guys. Way to represent. We've come to our public participation segment of the meeting. I do have a couple of cards turned in. Public participation is open for residents of the district, parents of children in the district, and employees of the district. You'll be called to the podium and given three minutes to speak. Just let us know your name and address in relation to the district. The board will not engage in any debate concerning the remarks or take any immediate action. We may refer something to the superintendent of committee or take the remarks into consideration for future actions. So, first, we'll call Deirdre.
Thank you so much for having me. My name is Deirdre Kyphus. I am the parent of West Bend graduate students, and I'm also the founder and executive director for an organization called Life of Hope. And that is the reason that I am here, is on behalf of our current past and future students and as the leader of Life of Hope. I'm coming here today to propose and hope that I might gain favor from the school board, that the school district would recognize Life of Hope as a resource to help individuals, our students, staff, and families facing the topic of suicide ideation, attempt, or loss. And the reason why I come here today is that it's our unified belief, the people here with me tonight, that our students deserve every opportunity and resource to support their success during and following their high school graduation, as well as those same resources for their families. That is what Life of Hope serves to do, especially in relation to our student population. I wanted to share some specific numbers here, because I don't think it'll be too surprising that when we had the audit in 2018 of our youth risk behavior survey, 8.2% of the students shared that they had made a plan for how they would attempt suicide within the last 12 months, with 4.2% of those reporting that they had attempted suicide during that same period. Now, these are students that represent the entire Washington County area, but those numbers would apply to West Bend as well. Further, 35.7% of Washington County public school students shared that they never or rarely get the help that they need when feeling sad, empty, or hopeless, which means that they run a higher risk of suicide ideation, challenges in the classroom, absenteeism, and the potential for not graduating from our schools, which affects all of us long-term. Our resources include a program called Next Step, and each one of you have before you the top sheet of a packet of information. And Next Step is described as, within the program, "A hub of resources and tools for helping individual families affected by suicide ideation, attempt, and loss. We recognize that untreated and mismanaged risk factors can lead to thoughts of suicide and unhealthy behaviors, and by introducing protective factors, that the healing process can begin." It's through this particular program that I asked that the school board consider making Life of Hope a mandatory, or at least very highly encouraged, resource for referral of all mental health professionals within our school district, teachers, faculty, that are made aware of a student struggling with the thought of suicide, a survived attempt, or a member of their families, because we do recognize that suicide affects more than just the individual. And it's our belief that the track record that Life of Hope has had over the last four years will subsequently result in the reduction of suicide attempt and loss. To date, we've helped 19 students in Washington County, 14 of those from our local school district. We have not lost a single one to suicide, and the majority, with the exception of only one who was a month away from graduating and had already dropped out of school, have all graduated or on course to do so when their families and they state that that likely would not have been the outcome had they not come in contact with us. So, thank you so very much. I hope I stayed within my three minutes.
You were darn close. Nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deirdre. Jackie?
All right. Good evening.
Jackie, we'll have you just start with your name and address, and then we'll go from there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Address?
Your first and last name and your address, yep.
Jackie Schmaltz. I'm a teacher and resident of West Bend, so I teach at the high school at West. I'm also the parent of a West junior this past year. So, I'm here to talk about what is called the Youth Impact Club, and it's part of Life of Hope and yet different. It would be our teens taking the lead to promote a lifelong mental wellness and suicide prevention. And so, these are some of the teenagers that have shown some really strong interest and already put in a tremendous amount of effort working with Life of Hope as a teen group. So, I'm kind of hoping that I can eventually get this in our high school. There have been three years of student effort to try to bring the club into our schools, which was denied. I'm not sure why. And since then, we've lost three students to suicide, including, sorry, my son who died this past March. I'm that mom. So, I have obviously a very strong interest in this program. Between the 200-plus students that had me as their teacher this year and all of my son's friends and classmates, there are so many of us who have been affected by suicide, and there's too little dialogue to help us all process what has happened. So, with suicide on the rise among this age group, it is urgent that more be done within our schools to address suicide, suicide loss, and to promote mental wellness. I'm not in any way blaming anyone for what happened to my son. I just want to make sure that the kids that were affected do well and that we can prevent something like this in the future. So, what I'm hoping for, my reason for coming here, is I'm counting on your future approval and support of the Youth Impact Club, and I am in the process of setting up a meeting with Ralph Schloss and John Graff to, you know, share with them the details and the hopes that I have for this. And I have proof that there's some awesome teenagers that are willing to, you know, work on this good cause. So, I hope I stayed in my three minutes.
Oh, you're good. Thank you very much, guys. Students, thanks for being here. Thank you, Jackie.
I guess I'd like to ask Superintendent Kirkergard to please work with Mr. Schloss and Mr. Graff to let us know what the next steps are on this club, clearly very needed. And Jackie, thank you very much for coming tonight. So, we'd like to just get an update on that, hopefully before school starts.
I was just going to mention, excuse me, mention that I will have Sharon and Laura, as well as Ralph and John, get together with some information and in August, report out to the board where we're at and what we can do and go from there. So, we'll put it on as a August agenda topic, if that's okay.
Anybody else wishing to address the board tonight? If not, we've got a couple of guests in the crowd. I'm going to allow Superintendent Kirkergard to introduce our guests for our first discussion item.
Thank you. In May, I had an opportunity, and I shared that with you at our last meeting, in May had an opportunity to visit with Craig Sedanico, the mayor, Kevin Steiner from West Bend Mutual, as well as Tim Schmidt from Delta Defense. They're forming a committee to look at our facilities. They have asked to have access to our facilities and an opportunity to visit with Mr. Ross to discuss projects that have been completed, as well as projects that are being planned. There is no district involvement with the committee. There will be, the committee will submit a report in September and/or October. The board can use all of or part of the information as the board determines future facilities improvement. So, I appreciate their willingness to come forward and to help us out. And so, with that, I'll turn it over to Kevin and Tim.
Thank you, Superintendent. Thanks, school board, for allowing Tim and I the opportunity to speak to you tonight, answer a few questions. As Don said, Craig and Tim and I got together after the referendum to talk about perhaps what we could do as a community to help move us, our district, forward. And this idea of creating an independent task force to examine the West Bend School and specifically Jackson and the high school is what came out of those conversations. And so, as Don said, this is a private task force that will provide independent findings relative to the long-term sustainability and capital improvements at Jackson Elementary and the West Bend High Schools. It's certainly our goal, and is, it is our goal, is that we will not make recommendations to the school board. Instead, we'll present findings within the context of the district's long-range improvement plan. We know that the school board was elected to make decisions, and so with that, we just want to offer independent thoughts and findings that will help you draw your own conclusions and obviously take action accordingly. So, Tim, anything to add?
Sure, I'll try to add some value here. Kevin pretty much summed it up perfectly. But from my perspective, I remember when April, when the referendum failed, I felt sad and frustrated, and I'm like, man, what the heck? From my perspective, and I'll be a bit selfish, I want West Bend to have schools that people talk about. When I try to attract people to come to work here, I don't want them to have to go to Slinger. I want them to stay in West Bend. Now, granted, throwing money at a school infrastructure doesn't necessarily solve, you know, make a school better, but it's certainly a part of it. So, I'm excited to be a part with Kevin and Craig, as well as the group of other private citizens and other business owners that are going to come together and really just try to help support you guys. And I think that, you know, we can help out and work together and come up with something that the community can all get behind. Thank you.
Are you guys willing to take any questions while you're here?
Certainly.
I guess my first question is, are you off and running with this task force? Do you have a group of individuals in mind or planned, or how big is it?
Right, so, yeah, the committee has been chosen, so it's construction experts, facility management, communication experts, and so it's really a diverse group of people and that we have met, and they're all on board, anxious to get going, obviously, first with your support. And so, that's in place. We know where you're scheduled to meet tonight. There's actually a press release that I can leave with you that we would intend to release, actually, I think, perhaps tomorrow.
Correct.
And so, we certainly, and so we would like to obviously let the committee know that there's this private group behind the efforts of the school board to make the best decisions for our community, our schools. And so, yeah, so it's, we're ready to roll.
And if I could just add one thing. So, in terms of messaging, certainly, although we've kind of already got this started, it's very important to us and all the folks on this team that we want people to understand that we're supporting you. This isn't like this rogue group of folks doing their own thing. We're working to support the school board.
Well, first, thank you for the support. And second, not to give you more work, since you're all volunteering your time, but I hear, I heard that you, you know, spoke of Jackson and the high school. I think we can probably all agree that Silverbrook and Badger are probably in pretty good shape, but I wonder if there's any opportunity for you to take a look and include in your time and study the other elementary schools that I'm sure are in need of some repair as well or some updates. And if we're looking at everything on a whole, and we're, you know, the community's kind of coming together on this one, I wonder if you might have time to take a look at those schools as well.
So, Nancy, appreciate the question. We actually had that discussion, and I think initially, our thought was to focus the group on Jackson and the high school, but certainly I would say that, you know, this group is very willing, and perhaps that's a conversation we can have with the group as we go forward. And, you know, it sounds like, yeah, there's other opportunities for us maybe to have an impact. We'd like to demonstrate that this is helpful and allow you to still do your job. And so, certainly, we thought, you know, Jackson and West Bend and the high school is a good way to start, but I certainly believe there's opportunities for us to maybe move beyond that.
Yeah, I mean, I, as only speaking for myself as a school board member, would really appreciate that. I mean, I think that there are opportunities there, and I think that when we can come together as a community as a whole, so maybe my child doesn't attend Jackson, but I, you know, my child attends McLean or Fair Park or whatever it might be, you know, to potentially have all of that buy-in, I think, could be really beneficial for the future.
Right. So, Nancy, one other component. So, there's been discussion among the small group that it's critical that we kind of address it from a clean slate mentality. So, we don't like use April, the referendum, as some, you know, starting point, but rather, no, let's just wipe the slate clean and figure out, you know, from our perspective, yours is what we think. And again, that's just a data point, but, you know, you guys can use that.
I will also say that there's actually a couple of the committee members that have worked with Mr. Ross, I think, in the past on the long-range facility plan, and so there actually is some knowledge from this group who perhaps can also, you know, along with obviously the expertise from Mr. Ross, bring some expertise to how far we've come.
Thank you.
Go ahead, guys.
You know, I just had a comment about just to thank you for, I mean, these are some of the largest employers in our county that have huge facilities, so, I mean, your knowledge and findings on a committee will be, I think, very beneficial to us and maybe just for the public listening. Anybody's been at Jackson at let-out time and see the safety concerns of kids crossing the street and drop-off zones. So, there's just a bunch of safety concerns at both our high school in Jackson and other facilities. And if you've been in some of these mechanical rooms in our schools, we have equipment from 1940s and 50s still in there. So, it's eye-opening to go through some of these facilities, and I just appreciate the set of eyes, additional eyes that we'll have on it. So, those are my comments. It's not more of a question.
Gentlemen, let me open by, again, reiterating, thank you and appreciation for stepping up and helping the community. I'm interested in the scope of this in terms of the findings. Is it more infrastructure and plant-related, or will you get into areas, you know, we've talked about the library modifications, and without making recommendations, would you potentially include findings that, you know, this is outdated in terms of an instructional-type situation, or is the focus going to be more on the physical plant itself?
So, it's my understanding that we're not going to be talking or looking into instructional anything. Certainly, from my perspective, library facilities does fall into, I guess, you know, superstructure, that kind of stuff. So, I imagine that we'd be looking into that, but in terms of any, like, actual soft, you know, soft teaching, no. I could certainly be willing to give some insight, but nobody wants to.[1426.14][1426.16][laughter]
Also, on behalf of the district, again, thank you and thank all the members of the team in that you're obviously dedicating your personal time to this, and everyone's personal time is valuable. We really appreciate it. And just to confirm, I think it's important that this board recognize and maximize this group's independence. And so, you can just confirm for us that none of the board members are participating on the committee, no district employees?
Correct, correct.
Okay. That's excellent. Appreciate it.
So, that's a great point, Chris. The board didn't ask you to do this. This was your idea. We're not paying you to do this. The school district's certainly not paying you to do it. What are, kind of, our resources? You mentioned Dave Ross, access to buildings.
For the most part, that's all it will be, is that we'll provide you any information you need, just like we would provide anybody the information they need. We'll give you access to the building so you can take a look at it and kind of go from there. One of the things in the referendum that people talked about was that, well, you had the architects telling us you had to do X, and for all the dollars you spend, the architects get additional money because they get a percentage. Or you had the builders telling us you had to do X, and so they become the contractor. And so, this really does provide an opportunity, not for an outside recommendation, but they have no vested interest, other than they want to do what's best for our community and our school. And so, that really provides some additional credibility. The other thing that I would ask, and I think we talked about that, if you have an opportunity to go and visit, what does the new school at Sheboygan or some of the other places look like? And we certainly aren't asking for a Taj Mahal, but I think it's important to look at what some of the trends are in education, and some of it's just remodel. Slinger, I've been over there numerous times. They just did a phenomenal job with their remodeling at Slinger. And so, if there's an opportunity to look at a facility or two so that you can have a baseline data for a comparison, that would be extremely beneficial, I believe.
And I believe that, actually, Dan, someone just shared information about Sheboygan Falls.
Sheboygan Falls has a brand-new middle school, which would be a, it's not over the top, but it's a great facility. I said Sheboygan, but it's actually Sheboygan Falls.
We, I think Craig had had some conversation. That would be an important step, perhaps, to take a look at a model like that, so.
Yeah. One of our guys has already been there, and I believe the plan is to bring a bunch of them.
Yeah. And I also say, throughout this process, if there's any suggestions, any thoughts, any ideas, we're certainly open to those. We obviously want to deliver some findings that you find very helpful and useful to ultimately get us to where we all believe we need to go.
Yeah. What's best for education is kind of my big hot button, and walking into a poorly lit classroom and having someone, and, you know, I don't know who's on your committee, but having someone on your committee say, well, these lights are all on, they're fine. Well, they should be at 1,400 lumens, and they're only at 200, and they're not fine, you know? So, that's why what's best for education, you guys both work in beautiful facilities, and so you know, on a business level, and it's similar, but there are differences. And I think those are things Dave Ross can help with, or if you put, if your team has questions that you have for Laura Jackson or Tim Harder or Don, put them together in a list, and we'll make sure that our people are responsive to you. But thank you very, very much. I mean, this is a heck of an offer that putting a strong group of community people like you together to do this is something where you certainly won't turn down, so.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
I was just wondering what the timeline is.
So, our thought was is that we'd actually report our findings in October. So, that's currently what, you know, we're shooting for, so.
Do you think there's any communication that comes out? Are you going to keep things pretty private as you go along, or you said a, kind of a press release announcing what you're going to do, but do you anticipate any updates along the way?
I think, I'm sure there'll be updates between now and October, but they'll probably be very carefully, I hate to use the term scripted, but very carefully planned so that we don't allow, you know, inaccurate communication to go through.
And I think what Tim said is certainly nothing to the public. Obviously, whatever we find will be communicated to you.
Good point, good point. Yeah. You guys were here first.
Yeah. And so, and we know that we have to be careful about, there'll probably be some people that want to know more. But really, it's to you who we're reporting to, and so, and we'll talk about the idea of, is there some things that perhaps along the way we could report?
And which is one of the beautiful things about this being completely private. It's like, you know what I mean? We can, we can share what we want with who we want. Great. Well, thanks, thanks for saying that.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move along to our consent agenda tonight. On our consent agenda, our minutes of the June 10th regular board meeting, disbursements posted to June 17th, 2019, revenues and expenses in the aggregate July of 2018 to May of 2019, the Head Start Status Report, and ratification of contracts.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Any questions on our consent agenda? That was Chris and Nancy. All in favor, please signify by saying, oh, we do need a roll call vote? Is she on the phone? Should we wait for her to get on the phone? She missed the motion, so I think we go ahead and vote.
Hello?
Hi, Toni. We are right in the middle of a motion on our consent agenda, and if you've reviewed our agenda for tonight and are familiar, and I- And if you've reviewed our agenda for tonight and are familiar, and I can reread the consent agenda. The motion is to approve in its minutes of our June 10th, 2019, regular board meeting minutes, disbursements posted to June 17th, revenues and expenses in the aggregate July of 2018 through May of 2019, Head Start status report, and the ratification of contracts. The motion has been made to approve and seconded, and so I'm going to do a roll call vote, starting with Kurt.
Okay, I'm ready.
Yes?
Yes from me.
Yes, and that motion carries and passes seven to zero. All right, we will move on to our first action item tonight, which is the Elevate surveys used with district grade five and six students.
So last week I spoke with you about the Elevate surveys, and you had some follow-up questions. Those follow-up questions are on the top of the executive summary for today. I spoke with Adam Kindred of Elevate to go over the information on the student survey. They are, one of your questions was, will they be electronic and can we eliminate the code? The code will be eliminated. We will verify that by looking over the survey prior to the students taking it, so that there'll be another check in place for that. They are currently transferring over to a different system for some of their information, so the surveys will be electronic next year, utilizing their new system. And so the parent, we had talked about the parent opt-ins, and the suggestion was made to have a paper drafted and available at the orientation for students in the fall, when they return for school and parents are signing a lot of papers. Give them the information about the survey at the top, provide the survey in the office for them to scan if they would like to, and have the parents opt-in at that time. And I spoke with Lance Rel, principal at Silverbrook, which is where the fifth and sixth grade students are, for those who aren't watching. And we will put that procedure in place as well. Are there any questions that you've had, that you have now, that, since our last meeting, or with this new information?
Thanks for clarifying that information. Any other questions on this one?
So Laura, to clarify on the parental review, so will the surveys be in place in the fall when the students return, or?
They'll be given during the school year.
During the school year, so the parents, if they want to review it, they can come in, they'll be notified even though they opted in in September?
It would be in the student newsletter, in the classroom newsletter, when instruction is starting.
Okay.
And so the first survey is given pre-instruction. And so that would be given to the process that parents were notified in the past of the, of interactions with Elevate. And this program was through the family newsletter at the site and the classroom newsletter.
And will the parents have the option, even though they may have opted in at the beginning of the school year, "Oh, I didn't understand what I was signing up for. I want out." They'll have that choice?
If a parent said that, we would absolutely, I would agree with that, their concern or their request. We would comply with that.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I think you probably said this earlier, but just for the good of the record, the parents will have the opportunity in advance to review all the questions on the survey?
If they so chose.
Thank you.
I move to approve the Elevate program survey for the Too Good for Drugs program.
Second.
Motion and second. That was me and Nancy. Any other questions, discussion? I'm going to do a roll call vote, starting with Kurt.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 And that motion carries. Our next action item tonight is our 2019-2020 district preliminary budget.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. Superintendent Kirkagard, thank you for the opportunity to present a preliminary budget. And I'm just going to pull it up here. Have a document. It was included in the board packet. I believe it does meet the objectives that were given by the board to administration, having a balanced budget in a sense, and we do have that. I'd like to exercise or share, and I'm sure you're already aware, it's a very preliminary budget. There's a lot of information that does need to be finalized. I believe it takes a conservative approach, both on our possible revenues as well as the corresponding expenditures. There are some decisions that we'll make later on, once the state budget, the annual budget is approved. We will, we could change course of actions. We could take a different look at this. But for now, we have met the objectives. It does meet those requirements. I will, and this is a format that I started using for the quarter three, revenues and expenditures in the aggregate. So again, I'm trying to get kind of a familiar approach to this. It's broken out by fund, with revenues on the top, expenditures in the bottom, per grouping. So I'll be going over that. We took, two years ago, 17, 18 school year, actual expenditure audited numbers. We took this year's budget, which was approved back in October, and then the 1920 initial budget. It is a formal process, but with that being said, it's still very preliminary. So I tried on paper with some assumptions to keep the mill rate flat, meet some of the budget drivers based on that discussion that we had last week. I've already incorporated some of those, some of that discussion. But things will be finalized. We'll have our annual meeting in September. I'll be bringing updated information at that point, as well as the final levy, mill rate, budget, the final document at the end of October. So let's talk a little bit about tonight's budget. And again, the purpose behind this is really for the board to take action in order to begin the spending process. July 1st is a brand-new fiscal year, and so it's commonly accepted to take this step. And I know we've done it here. I think I've done it in just about every district that I've been in. So with the general fund, and I'll try to fit it in the window here, as you'll notice, current year that we're just wrapping up, $72 million. We do have, we're exceeding the revenues by a little over $1 million. But as we look at the far-right column, $72.75 million, both on the revenues as well as expenditures. So I am presenting a balanced budget. This is taking into consideration any of those expenditures that we are already aware of, and as well as some possible assumptions with some staffing, purchase services. We've included the 2% increase in transportation and those types of things. So I've incorporated a lot of this into the, into the numbers that you're seeing. So that's number one. As you'll notice, the ending fund balance is $14.7 million, both in the current year as well as next year, again reflecting a balanced budget, no use of fund balance. Number two, our Fund 21, and again, there is a write-up of the 10 items. Those are those white boxes with the red frame. I do have a description of each of these at the end of the, it's page four in this document. So I'll just be going through them numerically. Fund 21 is our gift fund, so this is where, rather than literally gifts and donations, smaller grants and whatnot, we can run that through our Fund 21. There's a purpose behind that, is that it doesn't interfere with our aid and our property taxes, so it can be deposited into this account. Anticipated about $300,000 of yearly activity. That's what we've presented this evening, both on the revenues as well as the expenditures. There can be some fluctuations based on that, because again, there are grants and donations, small grants, and donations, those types of things. So that can fluctuate, but it's a good estimate at this point in time. But again, a balanced activity, which when it is not balanced, they're using fund balance from a prior-year donation, or they might be adding to fund balance, meaning that they'll carry that over in a future year's fund balance. Fund 27, number three here, so this is our special education. This has to balance. So every year you will see to the penny it does balance. This year we're seeing a slight increase. Again, an estimate at this point in time with the information that we have, slight increase. This is where the information from all the IEPs from our students that qualify for these services, it's all reflected in here, both in staffing, services, equipment, those types of things. We do receive some categorical aid, as well as some larger grants. So that's reflected at about $11.6, $11.7 million, but it's balanced out with our revenues and expenditures. And as we also look at this, this large $7 million, that's a transfer from the general fund, so that does help balance. If we have additional needs, that number goes up. Again, to reconcile it's zero. Fund 29 is Head Start. I don't have a number here. It's not a small number by any means, but this is our state as well as our federal, excuse me, our federal grant for Head Start through three different funding sources. It reflects our award for $1.4 million, up slightly from the $1.2 million from the current year. Number four here, which is our non-referendum debt, that $1.1 million that's actually off of our, and again, non-referendum. This is debt that the district has incurred by our own decisions through board action. But that $1.1 million is reflected through our payment schedule, both principal as well as interest. Again, that balances at $1.17 million. Fund 39, number five, is our referendum debt, and again, that's where we ask our constituents to enter into debt. And as you'll notice, for the current year, which is the middle column, we did levy $4.95 million. That's a revenue coming in. We only had payments scheduled of 1.7. The difference is the defeasance that we've talked about in the past. We did have a discussion about that this last week, last Monday. And as I'm looking and projecting next year, in maintaining the mill rate, again, based on our property values growing slightly, and as well as what room we might have in being able to maintain a flat mill rate, I would anticipate where this year we had about 3.25 million of defeasance of debt, where we can pay off future debt. I'm estimating that this balance, this budget allows us for about $2.6, $2.7 million of defeasance. So in maintaining a flat mill rate, we would be able to continue that defeasance schedule as we have the past several years. If there's questions at any point, please ask. Fund 41, which is our capital expansion, and this is a fund that we created back in, boy, 2008, '09. It has been going several years, but typically when we deposit money into it, we do spend it fairly quickly. From the current year, we had just shy of $1.5 million. There's been previous activity to say we'd like that to grow. The board wishes to have that amount grow by 4%. And that $1.536 million is the $1.48 million growing by 4% per board direction. We do anticipate, based on some prior discussion and working through those project costs with Mr. Ross, that we would fully expense that full $1.5 million, therefore leaving about $700,000 of fund balance, again, in this one facilities fund. We do have two, which I'll speak about next. We do have our Fund 46, which is our capital improvement trust. And this was where, five years ago, just about to the day, we did deposit, began depositing money into this account. We have not deposited very much money over the last several years. As you can see, in 17, 18, we deposited probably about $250,000 into that account. The difference in what you'll see in the current year, as well as what's projected for next year, is simply interest income, based off of the current fund balance. At fiscal year-end, there's about $1.7 million sitting there, slightly growing just because of the interest that we're projecting for next year. We could begin using that as soon as the summer. At this point in time, it's not been slated to be spent, but we could. I think at this point in time, if we tried to take on a large project, the coordination and permitting and whatnot might be prohibitive to do something, but we could legally begin to do that this summer. Fund 50, just a quick note, which is our nutritional services, so it's breakfast, lunches, snacks for all of our students. We serve thousands of meals every day. Abby Padilla does a wonderful job. She has a healthy fund balance that are requirements, but she's meeting that requirement. As we take a look at both the current year, she does have a slight fund balance growth. But in just some early projections of what her department will run, and again, she's her own business. The only time that she would get any type of support is if she operated on a deficit and she didn't have fund balance to cover that, which she's doing very well with our Fund 50, projected slight fund balance increase of a little over $400,000, well within their statutory requirements. They're only required to allow, I believe it's three months of carryover. So you take their full budget, divide it out by the 10 school months that we operate, she's only allowed to have that amount. So she's still within that. Our Fund 73, which is our other post-employment benefits trust, or OPEB trust. Again, we've established this, and we have been contributing towards this over the last probably eight or 10 years. It had grown. We've used a little bit of it, a little bit of it, as some of those expenditures have fluctuated. In the best estimate that I have at this point in time, we're still calculating final numbers, but we anticipate about a $1.2 million contribution from the general fund to support this activity. We do have retirees that also contribute money into this account, which is $100,000, which is amount that is their portion to continue on district benefits. And then as well, based on the current fund balance of about $3 million, there's also interest income. So that's the best estimate that we have at this point in time, and we will make sure that that's finalized by September when we bring this forward, again, for more information to the community. Fund 80, the last fund that we'll discuss this evening. We have been building up a little bit of a fund balance that is allowed to do this. However, in taking a look at what's best for our students and what programs that this fund has the ability to deliver, and I shared this a little bit last week, it's for anything outside of a typical school day. And so in taking a look, we do offer this to programs before and after school. Some of it subsidized by our families who take care, take advantage of those programs. But as well, we can partner with our community organizations such as the Y, the city. I did bring it up with Superintendent Kirkagard with our school resource officers and what they're able to deliver. And so I do have a slight increase in what we would be levying to our local source, which is the taxation, but then matching up those revenues with the anticipated expenditures. And then I put together a three-year spend-down, so at fiscal year-end, we'll have approximately $180,000 of fund balance. And if we'd like to get back down to zero, which I'd recommend, utilize about $80,000, excuse me, $60,000 a year over the next three years, and then help subsidize those programs and that expansion of services that we're offering through our community services fund. And then as well as I mentioned, this is just the 10 different write-up, just a little bit of a summary of the 10 different points that I just went through. Is there any questions, any discussions that you wish to have?
Andy, specific to Fund 39 referendum debt, so I'm assuming because the balance is going up, there's no advantage to paying ahead until you can actually pay off entirely, correct?
Yep, so we can at this point in time, and there will be a motion or a resolution brought forward for the current year, 3.25 million, where we end up, kind of, some fancy accounting that we do with Baird. We actually turn the money over to them, and they put it in an interest-bearing account that can outperform what we're doing right now. We can't pay that off. This isn't debt that's callable at this point in time. It's not our home mortgage that we have, where we can just pay it off whenever. So we put that into an account that, when the debt is due, it can then be paid at that point in time.
Okay.
There will be some accounting techniques, and again, approval by the board through a resolution that authorizes that defeasance. It will probably come in August, maybe September, for the current year that we're just ending. And then again, $2.6 million would come next year at some point, if that were to be approved by the board.
And I'm assuming we don't have any monies with Baird in that current capacity, or do we?
There are, we have been defusing debt over the last several years. I can get you that amount if you'd like. I don't have it off the top of my head. But we have, over the course of the last five or six years, there's been a handful of years where we've defeased prior debt.
Okay, thinking back to some of the referendum presentations and the questions, there was like $28 million in outstanding referendum debt. But what do we have?
Principal only.
Principal only. What do we have squirreled away to, you know, that truly unaccounted for would be $25 million in principal, whatever the number is?
It's a couple of million dollars, but if you'd like, I'd be happy to report that out to the full board.
That'd be good. Thank you.
Any more questions for Andy?
Andy, one of the things Paul and I had talked about earlier at our next meeting, maybe, because we have some new board members, let's just do a 20,000-foot view of how we balance the budget. We had a shortfall this year. We eliminated some staff, some administrative positions, some leadership positions. We, pathways is gone, and so just that 20,000 view perspective for the new board members, as well as the public, as to how we balance the budget.
Yeah, so on July 15th, there'll be a revenues and expenditures in the aggregate for quarter four, and I think that would be a good opportunity. Again, unaudited amount, journal entries and final adjustments and whatnot we made, but I think that'd be a nice opportunity to cover some of that.
Thank you.
Just a comment. I really liked the format. I thought it was of this presentation. I thought it was easy to follow. I appreciated the notes. It's starting to make the school finance stuff understandable, so.
I hope so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One other comment, as we do the committee of the whole, and we have an opportunity down the road, then we'll look at our benefits as far as insurance and the cost for insurance, and how that impacts the district, as well as all of the employees, and then also that OPEB account, and how that impacts the district as well as our employees. And at some point in time, not too And at some point in time, not too far down the road, it won't be August or September, but we'll want to have that as a committee of the whole discussion, so that we can have a very deep dive into those two accounts.
Good. I'll move to accept the 2019-2020 district preliminary budget as presented.
Second.
Any more questions on this? Motion in a second. Need more discussion? I'll do a roll call vote with Kurt.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Tony?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Andy. Our next action item is what we call an enabling resolution, which is, sounds fancy, but there's really not too much to it. I'll let Don explain it.
Yes. The board doesn't meet twice a month in July, and so oftentimes, there are resignations and hiring that take place. And all this does is it gives the authority to, of the, to the superintendent and/or designate to do some of those hirings and accepting of resignations. We will report out to the board in its entirety as soon as it happens, but it just gives us the opportunity to run business as we need to during that timeframe. I think we've done it every year for many years.
I move to approve the enabling resolution for the time period between June 18 through July 12, 2019, and July 16 through August 9, 2019.
Motion in a second by Chris and Aaron. I assume the time lapse in there is, do we have a board meeting?
Right.
On the 12th or something? Okay. Any other questions on this one? Roll call vote with Kurt?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Tony?
Yes.
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 And that motion carries. All right. We'll go on to a couple more discussion items tonight. The first one is our WIAA division changes for West Bend for next year.
Just wanted to give you a little bit of background information that, as you're aware, West High School has become larger than East High School the last few years. And for this year, for the 18-19 school year, at fall enrollment, there were 1,217 students at West, and there were 1,053 students at East. And so, and at the end of the year, there were 1,156 at West and 1,009 at East. So in that, 150, 160 students more at West than at East. And so for athletic purposes, the WIAA looks at each sport individually. And in the fall count, they will determine what category you're going to participate in for the next year. And so for the last two years, or dance and gymnastics at West, we're at a different division than East. For next year, boys' and girls' basketball for West will be at a different division than East. And that's based on the enrollment as of September of last year for next year. And so our September enrollment in 2019 will determine the enrollment, or the classification for different athletics for the following year. And so I wanted to show you that, but then also, at the bottom of my summary, it says, you know, for this year, we have a net increase of eight going to West. So there's industry transfer, and so there are 20 kids who want to go to East that are, or would be scheduled to go to West, and there are 28 kids that want to go to West that are scheduled to East. And the numbers might not be correct in the 28 and 20, but the net is correct in the eight students more going to West than East. If you look at next year's enrollment, based on the students who have been approved for this year for next year, as well as those who are sophomores, juniors, and seniors, there's only, there's 33 total students difference. And so even though there's 160 more kids at West than East, only 33 of them are based on choice. And so that does make a difference. So those 33 students, if you look at basketball, for example, it is, 1,200 is the cutoff. And so if you're 1,200 or above, you're a Division One. If you're 600 to 1,199, you're Division Two. For dance and gymnastics, it's a less, a different number. It might be 1,000, it might be 1,500, or whatever the case is. But this will be the first year that basketball will have a different classification for West than East. And do not have any recommendations at this point in time, but it is something that we may want to look at. Do we limit choice, at least to the point until East gets closer to the same enrollment as West? Or, you know, one of the things you can do is because of those 160, there's really only 33 that are based on choice. The other 130 are just based on their birthdays. You know, you can, you can change the formula. So, you know what, March, whatever, however you would do it, you can change some dates. The downside is that if I'm a ninth grader next year, and for the last five years I thought I was going to go to West, and now I say, no, you're going to go to East, sorry, you know, that causes some hard feelings as well. But I just, strictly information shows you, if you have questions as to why basketball is Division One for West and Division Two for East, it's just based on numbers. We'll still be in the same conference, we'll still play the same teams, all the things, until you get to division or playoffs for the state tournaments.
Interesting. Thank you for that. Any questions on that one?
A question on?
Can I make a comment?
Sure, go ahead.
I think, I appreciate the extensive explanation of how, when, and why. And I think something we need to consider as we think about ramifications and possibly adjusting things, is there are kids that throughout middle school, they're on development teams for either East or West, and they're playing with those kids. And so it doesn't just happen when they become ninth graders. It's one thing to be thinking about it for five years, like you mentioned, Don, before they go to school, but some of them are actually actively participating in things with those kids. So I really, I'm glad we're taking this seriously and putting thought into it.
Yeah, good comment. My sons are already wearing West Spartan shirts, and he's only in fifth grade, so he's expecting to go there.
Yeah.
Yep.
Paul?
Question regarding the high school choice policy when we implemented that. I seem to recall in the original discussion, I don't know if it made it into the final policy years ago, that there was a cap on a 100-student delta. At the point that one school was 100 students more than the other, we would suspend choice? Is that the case?
I don't know that we would suspend choice, but we would certainly look at it, and especially if that trend would continue. We never even got close to that. I think you, over the last four years, probably the most in actual requests that we've gotten is maybe 40.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more? If not, we'll move on and talk about student academic standards.
Good evening. The student academic standards are required under statute to be approved annually by the Board of Education at the first board meeting of the new academic year. So that means that the July board meeting, you'll be asked to approve the standards that will be in place for the 2019 and 2020 school year. The document that is attached is our annual notice. That is also required to be available to the parents on the website. And we have had that in place on our website since that requirement was put in place by the State of Wisconsin Legislature. So the, you have before you the list of standards. What's different from when they were approved last year is we have linked on here, the science standards had been adopted a year ago, April, and the, so, well, those were in place last year. The new social studies standards that you adopted earlier this school year are now in place on this document as well. The links take parents right to the standards that the board has adopted. If you, there's one shift in the state standards at this point that's not reflected on this document, and that is the world language standards. The state has now adopted new world language standards and a Wisconsin roadmap for world languages. We will review that during the course of the next school year and potentially bring that forward for adoption for the 2020 and 2021 school year. Are there any questions about the academic standards that you have before you?
Laura, next meeting, what you present will be very similar to this.
At the next meeting, I would just be asking for approval.
So board members, if you have any questions on any of the specifics, you need to look at the website and go into, everything is there.
Correct. All of the, live on this document that you have in board docs, these are also live links. So it'll take you to the Head Start standards for Head Start, and then for the other... Sorry. Let me go back in.
Laura, while you're doing that, we have to approve the notice. We aren't, we've already approved the standards.
Already approved all these standards.
Yeah. So there's, if, yeah. You're approving this notice to parents, which happens at the beginning of every school year. Any other questions for Laura on these? We'll see this as an action item in July?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Great, we'll move on. Thank you. We'll have a report now from Sharon and Matt. Is Matt with you tonight, Sharon? No.
I don't see him.
No. We'll allow it. Seclusion and restraint.
I'm Sharon Kales, Director of Pupil Services, and I'm here to share information about our annual report regarding seclusion and restraint. First of all, the definitions of the, seclusion is restricting a student from leaving a space, and restraint is actually restricting a student's mobility. Those are the basic definitions from DPI. For our procedures, in the district, we use a program called CPI, which is Crisis Prevention Institute, and our staff is trained on the Nonviolent Crisis Management System. We have four employees who are trainers for the program, and they maintain those certifications. So we do training throughout the school year with our special education teachers and paraprofessionals. At the elementary level, from pre-K through sixth grade, the teachers and aides are required to be trained each year. And that is an opportunity that I have implemented for the district. The formal training is every three years, but if our teachers are ever going to put their hands on a child, I want to make sure that they have training each year in order to make sure that the methodology is used correctly. At Badger and the High School, the staff receives training on the techniques of de-escalation, and that really relates to calming a student down versus attempting any type of seclusion and/or restraint. And again, they are fully trained every three years. We also document every event, whether it be a seclusion or restraint, and parents are notified within 24 hours, and the teachers are required to sign off that they have notified the parents. Our data is tracked by site and by teacher each quarter or trimester, and it's also shared with the site administrators, so they have a better understanding of what is happening. If there is a high rate of events, our different, our district-level staff meet with the site teams to problem-solve. These are the number of events by each site, and typically, we have a couple of schools that spike each year. And that's typically related to one or two students, and if the school is not listed on here, then they have zero events. So this is just a different way to look at the same data. Matt thought you should have another opportunity, just in case. So you see Jackson and Fair Park. And what happens with those? We have some kids with high needs, and when these data are spiked like that, what we do is we provide a substitute teacher for the special education team. And then the special education teacher, who works most closely with that child, actually starts working with them in a one-on-one experience and really maintaining their ability to stay at school and work on specific behaviors. So we have to require, report the total number of students for seclusion or restraint, and that was 14 students this year, which is less than 1% of our student enrollment. 13 of those students were children with a disability, so that means one was not. And like I said, two students accounted for 20 of those 49 events, and those are the two, one at Fair Park and one at Jackson. This is data over time, if you look at each school year. So each year, we have collected this data, and again, reported to DPI. So it's just some trends that we look at. So next steps. Like I said, we require the ongoing exposure to training, whether it be de-escalation or actually maintaining the accurate implementation of the moves, they call them. And CPI has recently updated their program in both content and restraint, and this is in the last three years. So each one of our trainers has also been retrained, so they understand the practices. Our school psychologists and counselors are also working collaboratively on the de-escalation phase, and that's really related to students without disabilities. So, any questions?
Sharon, just one, excuse me. There we go. One question on the, on the data. You had mentioned on one of the slides, the total number of students for whom a seclusion or restraint is documented, documented is 14, but the, but the larger number was 49. Can you explain the difference between, or what that bullet point is trying to say?
Okay, that's the total number of students. Some of them would have multiple incidents.
I see. Thank you.
Sure. Anything else? All right.
Very good. Thanks, Sharon. 2019-2020 District Continuous Improvement Plan update.
I'm Jen Guenerman, Director of Continuous Improvement. I'm here tonight to talk about the district improvement plan for the 19-20 school year. Last time I came and talked about the current plan that we have in place, and at that time, I explained how it's kind of like a tax season, just like the financial piece is where we are living in a couple different school years with each of our documents. This calendar was shared last time, just going over the outline of when we'll be talking about specific pieces of the district continuous improvement plan. Now would be the time that I'm sharing preliminary ideas with you, and then we'll come back in August and potentially in September and talk a little bit more in depth. When we come back in August and September, this would be an opportunity where if the board would like, we could have a longer chunk of time at a committee of the whole meeting to talk about specific areas, but that would be up to you to discuss and decide with Mr. Kirkergard. But I did list in the initial committee of the whole meetings if that would be a request as we move forward. Our plan will focus on these same areas for student learning, engagement, customer satisfaction, safe and secure, effective and efficient. In the area of student learning, there is one overall in all of the areas. One thing we're going to implement this year is just the validation of action steps, going to quarters or trimester. Last time, we had it by a certain month, and for every school, it was a little bit different. And so we're going to try and align that to either the trimesters or the quarters, whatever the school's calendar is on. And then we can organize our leadership team meetings around that, so that our teams are talking about it and having the same information at the same time. That will be one of the changes. I anticipate moving forward, we'll continue with our literacy and math goals, as well as looking at our students, our whole population, as well as looking at the ACT, not just our overall average, because that hasn't been a goal, but just how we are monitoring our students who are college and career-ready. More information will come in August, as we'll have more detailed goals, as well as strategic actions. In the, in the area of engagement and customer satisfaction, here are some preliminary ideas to share with you. Some of the things we talked Um, some of the things we talked about last time, based off of the, um, staff satisfaction and engagement survey. Um, so what we'd like to do next year, um, we've already begun some conversations around looking at, um, that staff engagement at the building level. And each building will have action steps on their school improvement plan that are really tailored right from that feedback from the staff. Um, so that would be out an overall system-wide step, and then the schools will follow up with that on their school improvement plan. Another area, um, we talked a little bit last time about, um, satisfaction and engagement surveys going beyond the staff and thinking about students, um, as well as parents. And Don had shared at that time, um, just the idea of, um, surveying parents, you know, at the end of fourth grade and students, um, then the following year, at the end of fifth, or at the beginning of the fifth grade, to say, hey, how prepared did you feel you were for that next level? Um, so right now, what we're talking about is what would it look like to deploy, develop, deploy, and communicate the results for a parent satisfaction survey. So we're just in those preliminary planning conversations right now. Um, but we'd like to get some more information from parents and students, and then we would rotate that with the staff satisfaction like every other year. Down below are some specific action steps, again, outlined by each quarter. Um, we'll have more details, um, as we do a little bit more of the planning, and this will be more developed the next time we come back to talk about each area. The one piece in engagement, customer satisfaction, um, we previously had a, um, a statement about, um, open enrollment. So that might be something to talk a little bit further about of what, what does that look like? What are those specific strategic actions, if that is an area of focus? Um, our school principals call families and kind of get a little bit more information around open enrollment and why students aren't, you know, coming to the district. So we'll have to talk as a group of if that's something we're going to want to continue, or what that, like, specifically looks like. In the area of safe and secure, um, this is where we'll ha- look at our safety pieces as far as, um, from a building standpoint. So, um, Dave Ross and I will collaborate on this. Um, last year, some of it was very simple, as far as like fire safety and fire code, um, pieces, which are things that are just, things we just need to have done and should be up to par with that. Um, so this year, um, we'll look at, um, having a bigger goal beyond just our policies and the basics as far as like the fire safety. Um, and then Dave and I will work with the building principals to ensure we have a cascading goal, too, um, at the schools. It may be different for each school. Um, for example, with Decorah, they may have a new procedure in place. Um, and that may look different than it does at McLean or the High School. Um, part of goal two, uh, we'll continue, um, really under Sharon's leadership, um, and this is funded through the grants. Um, but it's also that, it's that threat assessment training, um, and Sharon can speak more to this. But as part of building our trauma-sensitive schools, uh, one of the pieces we want our staff to be aware of is, um, the threat assessment and have that specific training. Um, our goal would be to have 10% of the staff trained in this, so that would be like one or two people per school, so that if that were to happen, we'd have trained staff right at each location for that. Again, as we work through these things, we'll develop more strategic actions and fine-tune the specific areas. In the area of effective and efficient, um, this really is, uh, focused on things around our, uh, guiding philosophy of continuous improvement. This last year, many of our schools were implementing the, a similar data process, and that really allows everyone to look at student information and guide their leadership, as well as, uh, teaching, um, their, um, actions that they do in the classroom to ensure students are succeeding. And so we're going to continue with that with, um, all K-12, actually, 4K through 12, we'll be using that same process. I talked about that last time and really said, you're all invited into some of the data summits, because it's really powerful to hear what the teachers are doing and, and how they're impacting student learning. Another piece for this, um, is to really, in order to support the continuous improvement efforts at the teacher level, is, um, taking our next steps with a data tool that can be used by all staff. Previously, we had a data tool that, um, when originally purchased, it was, um, for a small group of people. And, um, our need right now is really for our whole system to be able to have access to student information. And so you can see down below that there is, um, some strategic actions. But what we have planned out in our next steps for the tool is called EduClimber. In August, all the teachers will be trained in just the very basics of the use of this tool. And so I'm happy to say that when, um, teachers come back in August, they'll be able to look at their student class information and already start thinking about where are their students and where do they want their students to, um, go with their class, um, in August, so before the students even step foot, um, in the classroom. So we'll have that training, um, in fall of next year. And then you will likely see the school improvement plans having a cascading goal with that. So there may be some follow-up professional development at the building level as well. For, um, our team purpose, um, you'll see there's things linked here, and that's just an implementation plan. We're really trying to articulate, um, what is, what is it that we're working on? Whether it be the vision and the skill of what we're doing, and what are the resources that it's going to take, um, to make this happen? And so for the example of, um, implementing a data tool across our K-12 system, we're using professional development, um, time in August as well as in October. We also have a core team member of teacher leaders that will be learning first and then helping us, um, implement, you know, how to use the tool throughout the system. And so, um, we're trying to articulate just all those pieces, so that we can all manage change in the system the same way. Like I said at the beginning, we can have more conversation at the, at a committee of the whole or any other areas. Um, but I would open up to conversation, discussion, um, anything, any thoughts from your end?
Apologize for my sneezing and things tonight. You do have four kind of key buckets, which I like, and I've always been a fan of focus on five to maybe eight things and get them done and get them done right. Do you feel like we're on track to do that again this year with your plan?
Um, well, what we're going to do, yes, and there's a little bit more work to do on that. And that's why this isn't as complete as it typically would be. We have leadership team meetings with all of the principals the next two days. And we are having a good chunk of time talking about focus. And that means, what are we focused on? And for some things, it means we might not be doing that, you know? Or what is it to the level we need to do it? You know, are we going above and beyond? Um, one of the pieces with the employee engagement survey, too, is, you know, just managing, um, all the different things. You know, for an elementary teacher, they teach science, social studies, math, English, like, everything impacts them. But a high school teacher, if they only teach, you know, social studies, well, that's a different, um, fewer things may impact that person. So, um, over the next two days, uh, Laura and I were leading a session on our leadership team meeting about focus and what are the areas that we need to prioritize. And we will probably have some hard conversations, because it's all really, really important. But we do want to be able to focus and have fewer things. Um, one thing we've done in order to do that is, um, think about the professional development plan for next year. And so we already have some of those pieces mapped out. So for example, on each data summit day, it's really the building's day to organize that. I also, I often help and support with templates. But each building will have two hours of curriculum instruction time, um, that's led out by Laura and the team as far as those priorities for literacy or social studies standards, or whatever it is for different groups. Um, so the goal is really to focus and have a few things to do well. Um, but we are going to have to have continued conversations on that, so more to come on that.
Good. Any more questions for Jen? Presentation. Thank you, Jen.
Thanks. All right, we'll be back, and we'll schedule more time in August and September, so we can talk more about the, the details and just some other areas to add on to here.
Perfect. Thank you. Superintendent Kirkergard.
Just a quick, a few quick comments. One is that summer school started today for almost everyone. We, uh, um, early this morning, we were notified by the city that we had a water main break out in front of the high school. And so, um, summer school started at 7:30, and by 8:15, we had to send kids home, because we didn't have water all day long. And so we had summer school all places but the high school, so we canceled most of those activities for the high school today. Oh, 2 o'clock this afternoon, 2:30, they had it up and running. And so no damage to the school. It was a city break, but pretty hard to have summer school without water. So that was that. Um, don't have the actual numbers yet for enrollment. Um, we believe that it's up a little bit from last year, and so I said I'd try to get it to you tonight. That won't happen until July. So in July, I'll give you a summary of where we're at with our enrollment. Jennifer talked a little bit about, uh, leadership. We have leadership tomorrow and Wednesday for the entire admin team. And so that should be a very, uh, quality two-day in-service opportunity for us to interact. Um, I do have a survey out to all of the leadership team. I want to get some feedback on my style, some things that I can do different or should be doing different. And so hopefully, we'll get some quality input from the leadership team. And then the last one I had was that, uh, talked to you a little bit about interviewing for the assistant principal. We had 30 applicants. We narrowed it down to nine. We had one that withdrew. So we had preliminary interviews last week, where they interviewed eight. And on Thursday and today, we interviewed four finalists, and we had four very good candidates. And so hopefully, by weeks in, we'll have a new AP for, um, West High School.
Great.
I got a question for Don. So seeing Dave in the back, how, when is, how long are you going to be here, Dave?
No, is this Dave's last school? So thank you for bringing that up, Kurt. So Dave is officially done July 1st. He is going to come and help Lenny out for some days as needed in July and August. But his last day is June 30th. And so, um, thank you for bringing it up, Kurt. Dave, on behalf of Don especially, I appreciate everything you have done for me, given me an opportunity to, uh, have some guidance and, and, um, so thank you, um, for all of your assistance. And I, I think the whole school board, you came for a short time, and it's been a year and a half later. And so we truly appreciate the guidance and leadership that you provided for the last year and a half. So take it away.
Yeah, same, uh, same here. I mean, you were instrumental in helping us hire Superintendent Kirkergard. So I appreciate everything you've done for us, and, and, uh, for most people don't know, he doesn't live here close, and so he drives into work, a long commute, and a long commute home every day, but appreciate it very, very much.
No, echo that. Thank you for bringing stability during some unstable times of, and you've brought some quality hires. So maybe if you could-
I appreciate the comments. I've enjoyed being here for a year and a half. Uh, you guys have been great to work with. Um, I think that, my opinion, the school boards need to decide what you need and want out of your district, and then find a, the school district administrator and administration to do that, and then get out of the way and let them do it. And I think this board does that especially well. And unfortunately, there's lots of school districts where that doesn't always happen. So, may or not, agree with me or not on that, but I think you do a lot well, and I encourage you to keep doing that. Uh, it's a great, great district, and there's a great future for it. So thank you very much. Yeah.
Thanks.
So I would also like to recognize that this is Jennifer Martin's last board meeting with us. And, um, she has been a great asset to the team and has done so much with our high school and our CTE programs. And, um, we are just so much appreciation, um, for her, um, dedication to the system and the work that she has done.
It's been a pleasure getting to know you as well, and best of luck to you and your family. And thank you for what you've done here in West Bend. We'll miss both of you. Thank you very much.
And, yeah. Jennifer's knowledge on curriculum and instruction is just unbelievable. So she truly has been an outstanding asset to the district, and very much appreciate everything you've done. So thank you, Jennifer.
We don't have anything on our agenda or on our, uh, on our calendar, if you will, until July 15th is our next school board meeting, and that's when we're going to try to start early. And in fact, we're going to start especially early, because we're going to have a closed session at 4:30 on July 15th. And then we'll have a regular board meeting at 5:30, and we'll see how that goes. Uh, if 5:30 is too early for us, and that needs to change, we can always change that as we go along. But we're going to try it in July, and then again in August, August 12th at 5:30. So, uh, we will see everybody again on July 15th at 4:30, uh, for, for an executive session. Any other questions, calendar items, topics? If not, I will move to adjourn.
Second.
And we, uh, the reason we do a roll call vote, in case you were wondering, is because if we have a school board member call in over the phone, it is our policy that any action taken is done by roll call vote when someone's on the phone. So that's why we do that. So Kurt?
Yes.
Yes. Tony?
Yes. Yes.
And we're adjourned. Thank you. Thanks for calling in, Tony.
Yeah, thanks. Have a good night.
You, too.
Bye.
Bye-bye.